One, and we're ready to get started.
Very good. Good morning all. I would like to call to order the April 7th, 2022 meeting of the Mendocino County Planning Commission at 9:01 a.m. The Mendocino County Planning Commission meetings will be conducted virtually and not available for in-person public participation pursuant to provisions of Government Code Section 54953 and the recommendation of the Mendocino County Health Officer. Meetings are livestreamed and available for viewing at the Mendocino County YouTube page at youtube.com/mendocino county video. In order to minimize the risk of exposure during this time of emergency, the public may participate digitally in meetings by sending comments to PBS commissions@mendocino county.org or orally via telecomment in lieu of personal attendance. All public comment will be made available to the commissioners, staff, and the general public after processing by staff and can be viewed as attachments to this meeting agenda on the Planning Commission Agenda page. To submit public comments via telecomment, the Zoom link and associated instructions can be found on the agenda for this meeting. In order to ensure that you are called upon to provide comment, please complete the telecomment form found at mendocino county.org/government/planning-buildingservices-meeting-agendas. Okay, that's a mouthful. Roll call, please.
All right. Commissioner Weedeman?
President.
Commissioner Jones, absent by prearrangement. Hmm, Chair Purnell?
Here.
Commissioner Babini?
Here.
And Commissioner Paulus, he's absent by prearrangement.
Okay, so we have a quorum, but it's just the three of us today. And hello to Commissioner Babini. This is my first meeting with you.
Hi, Allison.
Hi. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item 2, which is Planning Commission Administration. We have discussion and possible action, including adoption of resolution of the Mendocino County Planning Commission, finding that state or local officials continue to recommend measures to promote social distancing in connection with public meetings. And we do have a draft resolution in front of us. Before I invite a motion, I was hoping that staff could share with the commission and the public where the Board of Supervisors is at with resuming in-person meetings.
Sure. Julia Krog, Director, I'm happy to address that. The Board is actually beginning on April 19th with a hybridized meeting approach where they will continue virtual participation options and will also allow for the public to attend in person. So this being that that will be their very first meeting with, holding a hybridized meeting, we're sort of waiting to see how that's going to pan out before we really are able to have a discussion with the clerk of the board staff about the Planning Commission being able to move into the board chambers as well. They also have policies and procedures that they're setting up in order to make sure that, you know, the public and also the staff, as well as the supervisors, are safe during any hearings that are held going forward. So I anticipate there may be changes in the near future here.
Thank you for that update. And at this time, I would like to invite a motion from either of our other two commissioners.
Oh, Chair Purnell, if we could just invite any public comment on this item?
Let's do that first. Thanks, Julia. Do we have any public comment on this item?
For any individuals in the attendees areas, please raise your hand if you wish to provide comments on this item. The raised hand feature is at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Or you, yeah, you can also press star nine if you're on a telephone. And I'm seeing no activity, Chair Purnell, so I would say we have no individuals wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, great. Well, let's close that public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission then.
I make a motion to accept the item 2A for legal notice of promote social distancing in connection with public meetings.
And through the chair, Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, just to confirm the motion, it will be to adopt that resolution.
Thank you. To adopt the resolution. And Commissioner Weedeman, just double checking that that is, in fact, the motion that you wanted to put forth.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Babini?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedeman?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And moving on to 2B, do we have a determination of legal notice?
Yes. We have a determination.
The only comment on the legal notice aspect is that we did have a resolution prepared for case 6A, and it went out in the distributed packets, but it wasn't posted to the website until earlier this week. So I just wanted to make that comment on the record, but all of the commissioners and the applicants as well have a copy of the resolution, and it is available on the website at this time.
Okay, great. And Julia, does, that doesn't prohibit us from taking action on that resolution, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3, the Director's Report.
Thank you. I, Julia Krog, Director, I'm excited I get to greet you today for my first time as the Director of Planning and Building Services. I don't really have a report today for you, other than just to say hello, and I'm excited to be filling this position and working with the commission, the board, the public, our staff, and hope to be here for a long time. So I'm available for any questions you may have with me.
Great. Well, congratulations, Julia. Happy to have you in that role. Very, very well deserved.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And is former interim Director Nash Gonzalez, is he still around in some capacity? I mean, can he ever really leave?
Yes, he is. He's going to be here still working on special projects. I appointed him as our interim Assistant Director as well. So he is right next door to me, and we're happy to still keep him on board handling some special projects as well, so.
That's good news also. Thank you for those updates. Okay, well, moving on to Agenda Item 4, Matters from the Public. This is public expression. Members of the public are welcome to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters not on the agenda. Individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission under Matters from the Public may do so via email, telephone, or Zoom. For information on each of these methods, call the Planning and Building Department at 707-234-6650, or visit, was the website I read earlier, mendocino county.org/government/planning-buildingservices-meetings-agendas. All correspondence will be attached to the item and made available online on the Planning Commission Agenda page. If any members of the public logged into this Zoom meeting and wish to speak under public expression and have not completed the telecomment form, please use the raise hand feature to allow staff to add you to the meeting at this time. Instructions for using the raise hand feature are found on the agenda for this meeting. And do we have anybody that has joined us this morning for public expression?
We are not seeing any hands. Oh, there is a hand raised here. All right, Barbara, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Barbara.
Sorry, I was just gonna say you will have three minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and share a timer clock. I'll begin once you start speaking.
Yes, I'm calling about the, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about the cell phone tower, antenna tower that's going to be built on Country Club Way in Guadalajara.
We, we do have that item coming up later on this agenda, so if you are able to stay with us for just a few more moments, we will get to that item.
Perfect. Fine. I wasn't sure what the protocol was. It's the first time I've attended your meeting, and I do want to comment, so I appreciate it. I will stay tuned. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Barbara. Okay, um, do you see anybody else, Julia, wishing to join us for public expression?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time, so looks like we can go ahead and proceed.
Great. Let's go ahead and close public expression. We have nothing on our consent calendar, and so we are moving on to Agenda Item 6A on the regular calendar, which is case U R 2021-007. It's the renewal of a modified use permit. And with that, I will turn it over to staff for a staff report.
This is for a use permit to renew the use permit for another 10 years. The facility is located at 24761 Geysers Road. And it's pretty straightforward. They just have to go through this process every 10 years. The ordinance allows a use permit to run for 10 years. So that's what this is. There's no change of conditions, and there's no other matters going on with the tower. So that's about all I have to say for the presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this renewal for a use permit? Commissioner Weedeman?
Yeah, for some reason, my raised hand is not working. The, I don't have any problem with this renewal or questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Weedeman. And Commissioner Babini, anything from you?
None. Sorry, my mute wasn't coming off yet. Nothing from me.
Okay, sounds great. Do we have the applicant here to present anything today?
Yes, we have Justin Robinson, who I've just brought over into the meeting. Justin, you can go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready. And if there's any others in the attendees area who wish to speak on this item, please just use the raise hand feature.
Great. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, um, we've read through the staff report and the findings and the conditions. And as staff indicated, this is kind of a standard process every 10 years that we must go through to renew the permit for the existing site. No, no planned, planned modifications or alterations are proposed as part of this. And yeah, I'm definitely here to answer any, any questions you guys may have, but we're, we're good with the findings and the conditions as proposed.
Thanks, Justin. And Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
None from me.
Commissioner Weedeman?
Um, I don't have a question for the applicant, but I do want to say to the planner, Keith, I believe Hopland now is in a, it's not in the fifth.
No.
In the redistricting. Am I not correct with that? I think Hopland went back to what it was prior in the last redefining from the census.
And Commissioner Weedeman, I believe you are correct. It may have been, we haven't had our mapping yet updated from when this application was originally submitted in 2021, but I suspect that it is no longer within the fifth district.
Right. I think that just needs to be corrected.
Yes, we'll, we'll make a note in the file going forward. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for that correction there, Commissioner Weedeman. And if there are no questions from the commission to the applicant at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Julia, do you see any evidence of anybody wishing to speak on this item?
If there's any members of the public in the attendees area who wish to speak on this use permit renewal, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or at star nine if you're on a telephone. And I am seeing no raised hands in the attendees area.
Okay.
And I'll note there was no public comment submitted on this item either.
Okay, thank you. So no, no public comment or input today on this item, and so we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I could make a motion to adopt the renewal of the modified use permit, UM 19-2002/210, to approve the extension for 10 years on that permit. Sorry about that.
We do have a motion. And...
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, no worries. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
If I may, I just want to clarify that that's adopting the resolution within the packet as part of the motion.
Waiting, waiting for Commissioner Weedeman to come back.
Sorry. I have, I'm sorry, I'm in my office. I have multiple forms. Okay.
Commissioner Weedeman, we were just asking for a confirmation that your motion included adoption of the resolution in the packet.
Yes, it does.
Excellent.
All right, Commissioner Babini?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedeman?
Yes.
And Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, which is case U 2021-0006, a use permit to construct a new cell tower. And I will turn it over to staff for a presentation on this item.
Now, thank you. AT&amp;T's objective for the Guadalajara site is to provide wireless, high-speed broadband internet to nearby residences and to fill a significant mobility coverage gap in the service area. The site will incorporate the First Net Program, which allows first responders to get information quickly to help them make decisions in a timely manner. The tower will be, the tower will be built to provide co-location opportunities for future carriers and/or public safety entities. The property, the proposed facility will improve coverage for the surrounding residential neighborhoods. And the property, the parcel is about, located about two and a quarter miles northeast of the town of Guadalajara. And it's within, entirely within the coastal area and has an existing single-family residence, along with accessory structures located on it. The parcel is zoned, remote residential. The tower site is located in an open area, excuse me, of the subject property, but is surrounded toward the east by coastal forest populated by coast redwoods. With i equal to or greater than the tower i. Project site is relatively flat, but a tree-covered hill does block views of the tower from State Route 1. Some of the key issues identified with the project include visual resources, habitats and natural resources, hazard management, grading erosion and runoff, archaeological and cultural resources, groundwater resources, transportation circulation, power supply to the tower, and public access. All these issues have been addressed in the conditions of approval. Staff recommends adoption of a negative declaration and grant coastal development use permit, U 2021-0006. And there were some additional questions brought up by Chair Purnell in an, in an email, and I'd like to address those as best I can.
And what I can do here, Keith, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, because I do have a copy of that memo which was posted just this morning. So I doubt the commissioners have had a chance to look at it fully, so I'm gonna go ahead and share it here. It is available on our webpage for members of the public who may be looking. So go ahead.
Okay, so you can see the first question provides service area maps and a calculation of the number of residential units served by the proposed service, along with a map of other towers. I attached existing coverage map along with proposed coverage map for comparison, along with a number, a map of existing cell tower sites in the area. According to the project's agent information pertaining to the number of residences, the proposed tower would serve is usually not given. I guess you'd have to use the coverage map. And the second issue was, one, Chair Purnell wanted clarification of the 300-foot clearance required by CAL FIRE. Key issues, visual resources may need to be modified to clarify how removal of dense evergreen tree canopy does not constitute significant vegetation removal. The applicant had noted on the application on a checkbox that they wouldn't be removing any vegetation. And then there's an attached map on the page two of tree removal, and there's only two pine trees circled that would have to be removed as they're really close to the tower location or the lease area. And the third one was, which condition of approvals addressed, added to, addressed tree removal. And I noted conditions 2 and 29 actually addressed tree removal, CAL FIRE requirements of aesthetics. And then there was a question about, do the conditions for biological surveys include the 300-foot clearance area or just the immediate project area? And according to the biological survey, the Geist Engineering and Environmental Group conducted the survey on the entire project site and a 200-foot buffer area around the project area using 30-foot transects. Staff interpret this to mean that surveys are only to be conducted within the project area along with the 200-foot buffer area. And there was a question about condition number 18, which has to do with CAL FIRE requirement. That condition was, was referring to biological resources and not CAL FIRE requirements. The actual CAL FIRE comment regarding this project in part states it would be recommended that a defensible space perimeter of up to 300 feet, as allowed by Public Resources Code 4291.3B, be created and maintained toward, excuse me, discommunication site from a wildland fire. And I noted that for condition number two, that would be amenable to reword condition two to read, "Defensible space perimeter of up to 300 feet shall be maintained to protect this facility from a wildland fire. No trees that provide visual screening of the communications facility shall be removed after project completion, except to comply with fire safety regulations or to eliminate safety hazards. Tree trimming shall be limited, limited to the minimum necessary for operation of this facility. Any future tree removal at the site shall require either coastal development permit or modification to this permit to ensure that local policies and ordinances are adhered to unless done through a timber harvest plan." I think that addresses all of Chair Purnell's questions.
And so what I think we'll do here is just because there are these attachments here, I'll just slowly walk through those to show these coverage areas. So you can see here, we're looking at, this is the site location, and this is, let me make sure I'm giving you the right, this is the existing coverage in the area. So as you can see, there is, you know, some sort of rely, it says in the yellow, reliable coverage in transit, indoor coverage less reliable for where the tower site is located. The green is reliable service, which indoors and outdoors, and the blue is reliable coverage outdoors only, indoor coverage less reliable. So that's for the existing coverage. Now I'm gonna scroll down to look at the proposed coverage. So with the proposed coverage, you can see much more of the project area would be moved into that green category, into the reliable services for indoors and outdoors within the project area. And then this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Julia, could you go back to the first map, please?
The first map, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So may I ask a question, or should I wait Chair Purnell?
Go ahead and ask.
So there's only one other cell tower in this area. I thought there were two others.
I was gonna scroll, if I show you, there's a tower map, let me go down to that one here.
Yeah.
So this is the map showing where there are existing towers or facilities. So you can see that the yellow dots here are approved wireless sites, and then the, the white dots are pending wireless sites. So you can see there are some pending wireless sites within here as well. And the project site is highlighted right here.
Okay, thank you.
And Julia, bear with us, we are just seeing these maps for the first time. Could you scroll back up to the two coverage areas? I want to look and see at how the Highway 1 corridor would be impacted by this proposed tower.
We'll start with first the existing coverage. So you can see Highway 1 is the red line down here. So this is existing coverage as it exists today. And then I will scroll down.
Reliable service area.
Yes, and there's some portions a little bit further to the north here that are more in that yellow category with, you know, right along the bluff, a few of those blue areas, probably due to tree cover and things like that. And then if we look at the proposed map, you can see it's similar in that, that sort of, you know, northern area of Highway 1. And it looks like the main increase in coverage you're seeing is going to be back up in this area of Old Stage Road.
And so I think that's why the, the question that, that I had posed to staff prior to the meeting about the number of residential units that, that would receive benefit from this, I think that's why that's a relevant question. And in fact, we have received that information from applicants in the past. I am just trying to determine the benefit of the project here, and, and without having the number of residential units served. The benefit of the project here and, and without having the number of residential units served. Um, it's, it's hard to determine that. So I just want to note that and I realize staff may not have that information, but I just wanted to clarify why that question is being asked.
Sure. And I do know that we do have the applicant available, so they may be able to speak more to it, um, when they go through their portion of the presentation as well. Were there maps we, that you would like to look at here? I can finish scrolling through the attachments here. They also included the, um, visual simulation, I believe as well. So, um, the photo simulation, let me scroll through those. So let me make this a little bit so you can see what the existing and proposed is side by side. Is that acceptably visible? It looks rather small. Oh, good. And thank you. So, um, and, uh, Brooke was just stating that she sent each of the commissioners a copy. So you have this in your email as well.
Just now.
So from Country Club Way, this is the existing view. And then with the proposed tower, I will scroll in a little bit so that way you can see. That would be with the proposed tower there and it is a lattice type tower. Again, here is the existing view and this is from. Down at highway one looking north and you can see less visible or not visible at all from this vantage point. This is the existing view.
Can you go back to that? Um, can you roll scroll back? Cause I can, I'm going to enlarge it. Hope right there. Thank you.
I think these are also in our packet as a.
They are, but they are, but they're, you, if you can enlarge this, you get a better view. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So then if I keep scrolling down. This is existing view and then this is the proposed view. This is from old stage road looking southwest at the project site. Um, if. Based upon this image would be not visible. These are existing views looking towards the project site. From highway one as well, it would appear, yes, shoreline highway. And you can see that it would also be not visible from this vantage point. And continuing down. This is, there is an existing installation. It looks like it's visible within this view. Also from highway one. And then the proposed being not visible from this vantage point. This is also showing an existing installation that's in the area. This looks like this would be just off of highway one, um. Yeah, on Pacific Drive down in Gualala. And you can see the proposed installation would be, looks like just minimally visible in this area. Continuing down, this is off of the highway one main street in Gualala. That is the existing view. You see the Gualala Hotel there. And the proposed tower. From this vantage point would not be visible off of highway one as well. Continuing down, oh, sorry, hold on. Message pop up. Okay. And then looking, this is from down at the beach. So you can see there's an existing installation which looks like it's minimally visible in the distance from this vantage point. And the proposed installation would not be visible from this vantage point. And this is from the Gualala Point Regional Park looking northwest of the site. And I believe this is just a view still looking at from, this would be from that Pacific Drive that we looked at earlier. And you can see it looks like this is just showing that it would. Where the location would be, but it doesn't appear it would be very visible. And you see the existing installation shown off to the side there. And that's all the documents within the packet. I'm happy to scroll back up to any items that the commission would like to see.
Thanks Julia. Commissioners, would you like to take a look at any of that again?
Um, I'm fine to keep going.
Great. Thank you. Um, is there anything else in the staff report?
Hmm, no, that would do it. Uh. Just wanted to note condition twenty nine also addresses fire, Cal Fire issues that. Permit holder shall maintain a defensible space perimeter of up to three hundred feet as allowed in Public Resource Code fifty forty two ninety one. Uh, so I don't know if we really need to address or amend number two. That kind of, uh, says the same thing.
Keith, I think my, my question about that is how, how does the applicant know? How much fire clearance they need to provide if it is up to three hundred feet? Um, and the area around the project area has been described as, you know, dense vegetation. And forests, but we don't know how much of that needs to be cleared. It seems like it's, that's just a big gray area and hard to determine. The impact of the project.
They did have a Cal Fire. Uh, report done by Cal Fire. So I think they would have to. Have communication with Cal Fire, maybe have a site visit and Cal Fire could probably advise them. On what. What they would have to do. To comply with Cal Fire requirements. Yes, the, the Cal Fire State Fire Safe Regulations form is here. It doesn't really mention what would have to be done, but. Uh, they'd have to. They'd have to consult with Cal Fire and maybe, like I said, have a site visit to determine what might be necessary to comply with Cal Fire requirements.
Often Cal Fire is required to do, uh. A. Fight inspection prior to the building permit being finalized. And it's important to remember that defensible space areas does not mean a clear cutting of trees within that area. It means it's a fuel reduction zone. So meaning that tree thinning, cleaning out understory is really what is needed in those areas. Not necessarily that you have a clear swath of, you know, like a three hundred foot area around the tower. Just making sure that you're reducing the ladder fuel that could be contributing to a faster spread of a wildland fire.
And it is located in a high fire hazard area, so.
Commissioner Babini.
So from my experience in working with the foresters at Cal Fire when I was working for the Resiliency Center in Sonoma County. The defensible space like Director Krag was stating, it is pretty clear in that it, it's not necessarily a clear cut space. It's usually like ten feet up, you clear all the branches from lower down than that. Any reduction in, in fuel sources in some of the photos you saw, there were, you know, dead, dead tree limbs on the ground. Um, and any small dead vegetation i- is usually often requested to be removed by Cal Fire. And that is just to reduce the fuel source in the instance of a fire. Um. And I know from, you know, growing up in, in the hills. We never wanted to remove the trees near our home. It was often just the lower limbs and anything that was close to the ground or dying that we would remove.
Okay, um, any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Commissioner Wedeman.
I had a question, why AT&amp;T didn't do a monopine? You know, and I can see, I'm just going to share a little bit. I can see some of these photos and I know the area of it. You know, we have an airport right near here and. There's some areas where that tower is directly in view. And was it because it's a hundred and twenty feet that they didn't want to do a monopine, Keith? Uh, can you, um, can you expand on that or we can hear it from the applicant?
Yeah, in my opinion, I would think a monopine might be more visible because they're not truly. Natural looking in my opinion. And this lattice tower is narrow and it, it could be the height too of. The higher you go with the monopine, in my experience, the more. Fake it looks per se. And so the, the lattice tower is more of a narrower, smaller silhouette.
But I think we could, from the applicant too, about what might be some of the reasoning to have proposed the lattice as opposed to the monopine. But I want to make sure any other questions were answered before we go over to the applicant.
Any questions from the commission before we go to the applicant? Okay, it looks like we're ready to bring in the applicant.
All right, I've brought over Ashley Smith from Epic Wireless Group. Ashley, you can go ahead and hit the unmute button. And if there's any other members of the, um, in the attendees area who wish to speak on this item, please just raise your hand and I'll bring you over.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Ashley Smith, Site Acquisition Representative for Epic Wireless Group. Working on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. Donna Davis with AT&amp;T Mobility is also on the meeting and will be speaking after my presentation to elaborate on one of the many benefits of this tower. Our office had evaluated several locations in this area and found that a hundred and twenty foot lattice tower would be the least intrusive means to fill AT&amp;T's service gap. This tower also includes the opportunity for three additional carriers to co-locate on the tower once constructed. The main reasoning, uh, between choosing a lattice tower over a monopine was the location. We felt that. Due to the tree coverage, a lattice tower would be equally covered, um, by the vegetation. And therefore, secluding it in a stealthed tower would not be necessary for this build. This project will be beneficial to the Gualala area by providing the community a few benefits. The first being the FirstNet program. This program is a single nationwide network strictly dedicated to public safety communications. This network will allow first responders and public safety workers to send and receive voice, data and text without concerns of network congestion. It is not really quantifiable to state how many residents will be utilizing the proposed services as we do not have data on which carrier the residents utilize currently. Or which residents would switch over to AT&amp;T cell coverage. We do not have account of the residents in the area, so we can only speak to the area of coverage that is included in the propagation maps that were included in the staff report. In addition to the residents that live out in the Gualala area, coverage also supports residents and visitors traveling along Old Stage Road. Secondly, the FCC has determined that this is an area with insufficient internet service. As a result, this area was included in the FCC's Connect America Fund CAF two project. This, the purpose of this project is to bring high speed internet to underserved communities. This morning, we did receive an update from the radio frequency engineer that forecasted number of residential units that will be able to utilize this service for the internet. Is approximately a hundred residential units. The last benefit is coverage and capacity for AT&amp;T customers. We appreciate the opportunity to present this proposal and we request the commission's support of this project to help increase communication coverage and wireless internet to the community. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding AT&amp;T's proposal and I will hand this off to Donna Davis with AT&amp;T to elaborate on the FirstNet program.
Thanks, Ashley. Good morning, commissioners. Donna Davis with AT&amp;T External Affairs from Indecino County. Um, yeah, I just wanted to touch a little bit on FirstNet. So in addition to the improved coverage for, uh, local residents, visitors and, and business applications there. Uh, one of the key features and benefits of this new site is adding to the FirstNet network. Um, a little background on, on what this is and how it kind of came to be. Um, out of the nine eleven commission, you know, when the towers fell, uh, it was identified that one of the big challenges that happened with, uh. Dozens of, of public safety agencies responding to the towers, uh, that they were not able to communicate. Uh, there was not any kind of existing interoperable, uh, network to support them. Uh, there was network congestion, as you can imagine during such an emergency. And so out of the nine eleven commission was formed the FirstNet Authority. Uh, with the charge to build out a dedicated interoperable platform. Um, that includes priority and preemption for those public safety. And first responder, um, agencies. And what that means is, you know, if there is network congestion, those, uh, first net users take priority on the network. And even to the extent that they need to preempt commercial traffic that, uh, you know, they're, they, they maintain that, um, priority over the network. Uh, you know, why that's important here to, to think about, you know, we get this, uh, question often is, you know, oh, we already have coverage here is that. You have to relic, recognize that when we have wildfires, which, which we do here in California, especially in Northern California. Uh, in addition to your local, um, responding agencies, you know, with mutual aid, we're looking usually in the size and scope of the fires these days. Uh, you know, mutual aid encompassing dozens of responding agencies from across our state and even from across our country. So this first net service will be there to support those agencies, uh, responding. And you might think, uh, traditionally of that being, you know, fire and, and law enforcement. Uh, EMS and your emergency management departments. Uh, FirstNet also, uh, supports utility users, uh, transportation, healthcare and public health, which often come into play when we're responding to emergencies. So, you know, the reason I, I mentioned all this is just to kind of understand that a lot of times when we look at a, a cell site and we're thinking just about. Um, the users there immediate for every day, this does improve that service, but it's, it's also going to improve. That service and that connectivity, uh, even when emergencies happen for those, um, responding agencies. And, uh, that concludes my piece there. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Ashley. Um, did you have anybody else to present today?
No, it was just the two of us. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, well, let's entertain questions from the commission. Um, Commissioners, Wedeman or Babini, do you have anything for the applicant?
No, it looks like a lot of my questions were actually addressed in the Habitat and Natural Resources. Section of this because I was looking to see if there was any ESHA potentially boundary intrusion or, um, wetland delineation. It looks like any parameters, you know, oftentimes in the coastal zone, they do a one parameter delineation for those. And so any sensitive species plant or, you know, flora fauna will be identified there. And it doesn't look like there's any natural intrusions that I'm seeing in this area. And so those are oftentimes the more, um, questions that I find I have with these structures. And I, I don't think that any of those are present here. So nothing further from me.
Thank you. Commissioner Wedeman.
Yes, I have a question for the applicant. Um. So in choosing the tower to be a hundred and twenty feet. Does that drive the lattice tower versus a monopine?
Uh, this is Ashley Smith with Epic again. Um, no, it, it doesn't necessarily drive the type of tower. Monopines, we can construct up to a hundred and fifty, if not more, um, more in height. So it does, definitely doesn't sway us to go with a lattice tower versus a monopine. But I also wanted to include that if we were to switch to a monopine as, you know, the rad center that was chosen for AT&amp;T. If we were to keep that without losing service by dropping that, uh, rad center. Uh, and that's the center line of the antennas. If we were to switch over to a monopine design, we would have to include an eight foot topper. So the tower height would be increased in order for AT&amp;T to keep that center line. And, uh, then, you know, provide the services and the, uh, you know, complete the objective that they currently have for the site. So the tower would be approximately a hundred and eight. But versus a hundred and twenty, you know, between the lattice and the monopine.
Um, I'm, I, I'm going to follow up on that. I believe you can also just have it be a hundred and twenty feet and you hold everything down eight feet. Is that not, uh, a viable option too?
That is an accurate assessment, uh, but with, you know, moving further down and decreasing the height of AT&amp;T's antennas. That also decreases the coverage and capacity in the area for.
Right, but we're looking at, and I'm just going to go, but the area we're trying to really pick up from the area of. Air, that's not covered is the neighborhood behind it. Like more or less, when you look at the maps of what you're going to pick up, that hasn't been picked up by the other towers. Uh, down slope, so to speak, uh, I would call it, uh, west, southwest of it, of this proposed is the, the. is the area around it, the airport, the area in the back. So that's really on what maybe I would say the argument to have the tower there, right? Is it's increasing an area that's nearer to it. I believe that's how I understand that. So we could request a monopine. We could limit it to 120 feet. Is that correct?
Analysis. And again, it would just be, it would differ from the propagation map that was given to the county in the staff report. And, you know, coverage and capacity would be decreased, but or could potentially be decreased.
Thank you.
And I have some questions for Ashley and Donna, and also wanted to thank you for that information about the number of residential units that you believe will be served by this. That gives the commission a better idea about improvements in the proposed service. And I, what I read in the staff report is that the way that these towers work are basically based on line of sight. Is that correct?
That, sorry, that is correct.
Okay.
Most of these towers are line of sight.
Line of sight. And so then my question then is that, and I'm thinking especially of the, because it looks like Highway One is already served pretty well by existing towers. And so I'm thinking about the addition of the FirstNet, which is, of course, I think everybody can agree, a compelling, you know, public, public safety argument for this tower. However, here's my question. When I look at, and I'm flipping through my packet right now, to look at some of these images, like for instance, on Attachment G, and we're on Old Stage Road. And from this location, we're actually not able to see the proposed installation. Does that mean that that area will not be served by it because there's no line of sight?
That's a good question. Well, the terrain in this area is very, well, everyone knows the area of Gualala, very hilly and whatnot. Elevation changes everywhere. So, you know, we look at the propagation map to really show where the coverage is going to be. In regards to your question on that exact location, I'll have to pull up that map to see if there's any services in that area.
Actually, also to add, the line of sight particularly comes into play with the fixed wireless service. For the exception of that, but as you know, with cellular service, that does propagate through, you know, you can be hiking on a trail and have cell service working. So I think we've got two different issues here. The service won't travel through a mountain, right? But if we're talking about foliage and that kind of thing, and as you know, you get cell service, you can have cell service indoors as well. So I think we might have two different questions here to address. So line of sight really comes into play with the fixed wireless access.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Ms. Prunell, if it would be helpful, I've pulled up the, to the existing and the proposed coverage map side by side. Would you like those compared?
Yeah, let's take a look at that again.
Let me just go for. I'm sorry, you guys are going to see all of yourselves here too. Oh, good. No, you don't. Okay. All right. So what you should be seeing here, this is the existing on this side and proposed is over here. Oh, good. And then on the one on the right, all those little dots presumably are residences. Yes, I believe we took our best attempt to be able to identify residences that appeared to be within that area. It may not be perfect, so. No, but that helps give us an idea. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions about this, these maps before? I do have one more question I want to ask the applicant.
No.
Okay. Go ahead and stop sharing. Yeah, thank you, Julia, for bringing that up. And then I had, I really just wanted to put some questions about these conditions of approval to Ashley and Donna, and I wanted to dive into some of the nuance about the up to 300-foot CAL FIRE clearance zone. I'm, you know, very well aware that it doesn't mean that the area is going to be completely denuded and nuked in order to achieve those clearances. However, as I, and I should say, of course, we want the fire clearances, right? I think that's a given. We want, we want to keep everybody safe. But the issue that I am running into with the conditions as written is I think there's too much gray area. And let me tell you what I mean. I am seeing reference to where the biological surveys need to be conducted, being defined by project site, being defined by work site, and being defined by buffer area. So we have three different definitions for where, what the boundaries of these surveys need to be. I am not clear on where those are. So one of my questions to the applicants is, are you clear on where those are? I think we need to know where the boundaries of the biological assessments are. And then the second question is, based on your experience, because this is what you do, how do the CAL FIRE clearances weigh into those boundaries? Because again, we've got project site, work site, buffer area. And then how do we define the CAL FIRE clearances within those three definitions?
That is a good question, Ms. Prunell. So it looks like work site, buffer area. It's all in, looks like Condition 12 for biological resources. So our office would use Steve Geist to completed the previous biological resource report to conduct that next biological study. Looks like pre-construction nesting surveys, the project site, and the buffer area. So I believe the buffer area is a couple hundred feet from where the tower site is, but I would have to confirm that with Steve Geist on where that would be. And then, what was your second question? I apologize for that.
That's okay. And just to point out, I'm seeing the project site and buffer area referenced in Conditions 12 and 13, and maybe others as well, I think also in 14. And then where did I see? But there's a reference to work site in 14 as well. So we just sort of have like a lack of definitions, and it's not clear to me where those boundaries are. And I'm thinking this is something that the applicant needs to know, that you need to know, like where are we conducting these surveys? And how does, this is the second part of the question, how does the up to 300-foot CAL FIRE clearance interface with those, you know, buffer areas, project sites, slash work sites?
Yeah, I'm not too certain how to answer that, but we would be working with Steve from CAL FIRE regarding, you know, the 300-foot boundaries. And we would, you know, be utilizing the documents. And we also have the fire protection plan as well that's included in our CDs that was not submitted in the zoning drawings as those were completed with the building department and with fire. But I, I don't know how to answer the question regarding the biological resources. The buffer area is most likely, again, about 100 feet from the work site. The work site would be, excuse me, the project site would be the tower location. The work area would be the access to utilities meant as well as the project site. And then a buffer area, I would assume, would be about 100 feet from that.
Thank you. I think that's really, really helpful and can actually help get us all on the same page about, about what we're talking about here. When we bring this back to the commission, we can have further discussion about maybe wanting to modify these conditions just to add additional clarity, but I think that's enough from me to the applicants. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Donna. And Commissioner Weedeman, the floor is yours.
Yes. You know, it's interesting, because this is the coastal zone and gets more scrutiny, not just from us, but from other agencies. So what's of interest is usually when we do a coastal development permit, we have to have our biological work done prior to really the submittal of an application. And so that it's part of the application. And I guess what's hard for me sometimes is we're asking for approval from the planning commission, but these studies haven't really been done. And then we lose sight of that. You know, it's up to get the building permit, then you need it. And I kind of feel like it would be really helpful, and it's an expense, I understand, that you're going to take a risk before you get an approval. But when we have, you know, nesting, and we know there's nesting birds in these areas, right? And so, but there's, we have no data on that. And so we're kind of putting sometimes, I think, the cart before the horse, that it would be better if we had some of the, what I would feel like these biological studies done so that we know the areas, that we know the location of these endangered species or not endangered species. So areas to protect. It's just, I find that, I find that being more consistent with other permit processes. I just want to add that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the applicants before we open up the public hearing portion?
Okay. Julia, are you able to see if we have anybody from the public joining us for public comment on this issue?
Yes, we do. So we have Barbara Corson, and I apologize if I butchered the last name here. Barbara, I'm bringing you over into the meeting here, and give me just a moment so I can share screen here for a timer. And Barbara, you'll have three minutes from once you begin speaking. And I will go ahead and start the time once you begin speaking. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Barbara Corson, and I have a house on Ocean Ridge Drive. So I could be one of the potential recipients of the benefits of this tower. And I have several questions regarding the tower. I read the review and I found that several things were not filled out in the report, like Item 23 was not completely filled out. I also found that it says there will not be any lights, but there will be exterior lights on for about 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But my real concern is the height of this tower is 120 feet, and the elevation at which it's going to be presented or established is at about 885 feet, which brings it to about 1,000 feet. And as Commissioner Weedeman mentioned, there's an airport there, and the airport does have a sock. And that sock for most of the time is straight out. It is probably a 25 mile per hour wind. That is the elevation at the top of that tower and where that tower will be. And I'm very concerned about the noise that may emanate from the tower from the wind, the resonance that may occur from winds at that elevation. And that has not been addressed in the impact statement as I have read it. Thank you. Can I use my time at some other time, please?
Are you wanting to use that time now?
Well, if there's, if someone answers or addresses my question, then I would, or not address it. If somebody addresses the question, then I would like to be able to have that minute for a response.
Let's go ahead and go to the applicant and see if there is a response to the concern about noise from wind.
Sorry about that. I believe I was muted. Thank you, Barbara, for your question regarding the noise from the tower. We unfortunately don't have information on what noise the tower would exhibit from the wind. However, we did complete a noise study for the generator and HVAC system, and that was all in compliance with the Mendocino County ordinance.
You elaborate on decibel levels to be in compliance?
Yes, one moment. Let me pull up that noise study. So it appears that with Mendocino County's general plan, daytime is 60 dB, nighttime is 50 dB. And nighttime is between 10 to 7 a.m., and daytime is 7 a.m. to 10 p.m.
And are those the levels that you expect the tower to operate at, or those are the thresholds that you will be under?
Those are the thresholds that we will be under.
Okay. And do you have estimates about what noise levels may be when the generator is operational?
Yes, of course. So they do it by northern, western, eastern, and southern of the property. So to the north, it wouldn't exceed 42 dB. To the west, 37 dB. To the east, 35 dB. And to the southern parcel, 42 dB. So we are well under the 60 dB for daytime, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m., and 50 dB between 10 p.m. and 7 a.m. at nighttime.
Thank you. And is that, just to clarify, that's only when the generator is operational?
So the generator turns on about 10 to 20 minutes per month just to make sure that it is, you know, working, and there's no maintenance that needs to be needed. The HVAC units will be on constantly throughout the day.
Thank you.
No problem.
And then this is not something that we do a lot, going back and forth between the public comment and the applicant, but I did want to give Barbara the rest of her minute, should she want to complete her time, complete her three minutes. Let me go ahead and share the screen here before Barbara begins speaking again. All right, Barbara, when you're ready, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, I am concerned about the magnetic resonance that may occur from the wind. The wind is, you know, not just 15 minutes once a month. The wind up there, for anyone who flies and is up there, is well aware that the wind, it can be quite extreme. And I'm concerned about this open space structure that could really move in the air. It just, I think that's something that has to be considered, and maybe checking the winds aloft would be a good idea. But I would like to see that addressed before this is permitted. Thank you. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara and Julia. Do we have anybody else joining us today for public comment? So I am looking, and I do not see any other hands raised in the attendees area. If someone would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature. If you're on the telephone, please use the star nine, and that would raise your hand so I can call upon you. And I am not seeing any hands coming up. I do want to know, they were emailed out this morning and posted to, there were two public comments provided for this item. One from an individual that I believe lives in the area of the tower, and then a secondary one from a representative of FirstNet. And those are posted and made available on our webpage. But I do not see any other individuals wishing to speak on this item. Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'm going to give the other two to. I'm going to give the other two commissioners a chance to jump in before I share my comments.
If I may, Chair Purnell, I would just like to make one clarification on a comment from Commissioner Weedeman um regarding the biological and botanical surveys that were conducted. So I want to make sure it's clear that there was, I'm holding it in my hands here, there was on-the-ground investigation conducted for this project. Um, the conditions that you see are recommending prior to construction surveys, which isn't uncommon to see where they may, because of the amount of time that they pass from initial surveys, to want to ensure that no resources are present when they begin construction. Um, the conditions do include measures that would be taken if any sensitive resources are discovered. Um, and that way, that's not considered like a future speculative survey being conducted. Um, there was that previous survey completed, which didn't identify any resources, but did identify the potential for resources to occur. Uh, I think one that you may be very familiar with is like, you know, California red-legged frog. We always have the condition saying that if there's a rain event, you have to cease construction, then you have to do the visual inspection. So um the conditions you see in the resolution are similar to those.
Thank you. That was, that, thank you very much.
Commissioner Bibini.
Sure. So I just wanted to touch on that as well. So, you know, with with my company, we work frequently within the coastal zone in Sonoma County, which oftentimes their standard conditions for their biological resources, pre-construction surveying is standard. And to um Commissioner Weedeman's comment on the pre um submittal packet uh biological surveys, I agree that there are um some minimal surveys done for the general area to meet CDFW and coastal zone requirements. Um, in cost-wise, those can, you know, the the pre-construction ones can be, you know, upwards of twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Um, a- and and I think that prior to approval, it is a little preemptive to get those surveys done without just doing the standard, you know, observations that you do prior to application. But those in-depth surveys, I I have found, they've been really helpful, um even in residential construction in the coastal zone, that specifically with nesting birds and the noise generated from any construction equipment. Having a qualified biologist, which it does look like in the condition twelve, um, the ten-day prior to construction, anytime during the February through mid-September, which is the dry season, which is when all construction usually occurs, that that is a requirement. And so that always, you know, m- makes me feel a little bit more secure in our findings that um the those protocols and measures suggested by the biologists will have to be met for any disturbance that may occur.
Great. And on that note, I'm going to jump in because, um, you know, my my concern is just about making sure that the biological surveys cover any area that would be impacted from the vegetation management. Um, I don't feel that the language is clear enough to do that. The goal, of course, is to protect critters that might be impacted. And we all know that when we go in to do any kind of fuel load reduction, vegetation management, even if we're leaving the big trees, um, it's loud, it's intrusive, there's boots on the ground, there's equipment on the ground, and that's just the reality of it. And so I would like to see some modification to the um conditions on biological resources that would clarify that any uh veg management for purposes of complying with the CAL FIRE requirements um be included in those survey areas. And I would lean on my other commissioners or staff to actually suggest that language. I I I can't offhand figure out what that language would be, but I think we can work together to get that figured out, and that would satisfy concerns that I have. Does staff have any comment or ideas on that?
Yeah, I feel like that would be probably expanding on condition um two, but I will say there's um some very voluminous conditions on this permit um that staff may be wanting to ask for a continuance on this item to make sure that we have those, can go through and really take our time and care in crafting that and making it clear for the commission.
Yeah, and making it clear for the applicant too, because, you know, when when they're hiring their biologists, they need to be able to, you know, direct them appropriately and set the boundaries for those surveys appropriately. And right now, I'm not clear on it. And what I got from the applicant is that they're also not clear on it. And so that that's my sign that we need to to tighten that up.
Chair Purnell, I think that where we could potentially add some more clarification would be in conditions seventeen and eighteen. It is more specific to plant, um, you know, potential impacts in areas adjacent as well um of the disturbed area, but it does also talk, and I know this is a standard practice, that credits can also be purchased um from the CDFW's um like the mitigation bank. Uh, but that is also an option that is usually available to any development that is occurring. Um, but I always lean on more of the revegetation in adjacent areas because I find that that is better than just utilizing the bank for mitigation um credits. But I think, yeah, seventeen and eighteen, we could potentially implement in those two conditions some more clarification.
Right. And I I had noted that eighteen could be fine too as well. Um. And I I really would defer to staff about how to clarify the boundaries of the biological surveys, whether that clarification happens within twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, or whether that happens more generally in condition two. I think that it could go many ways. Commissioner Weedeman.
Um, and I concur uh that. And with that, I actually do think we need to reconsider this application because I actually think in the coastal zone, um, this tower should be a monopine. Because when you look, I and I driven up and down the highway trying to see this tower, right? And it's hard to kind of totally get, but where you take your pictures, if you go north of Wallala Town, you have a better shot at that area. We don't have a photo from that direction. And I think a monopine, even though they look odd sometimes, they will look a hundred percent better than this lattice tower if seen from any viewpoint. And we can't always reassure that the any tree blocking it right now is going to stay in that condition. So I would like to see this applicant come back with a hundred and twenty-foot at the top of a monopine application with all the other issues we brought up as a commission to get clarification. I would feel better to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Keith and Julia, can you give us an idea of how we're doing the timing for this application? Like, when does this one timeout?
Um, well, I'm, I may have to look to Keith on that one. Um, I know we've gotten into hearing here today. So um I believe we we probably do not have a there. I may look to um we may need a moment here just to review through the file and see what our timing is in terms of the shot clock. And then I would probably look to Ashley and or Donna um for any comment on whether or not we they would be amenable to doing any sort of a tolling agreement if that is um what is required in order to allow for the commission to, you know, possibly continue this item. Because I believe if um the applicant is to look into a monopine, they would need to go back and provide some uh materials for the consideration of the commission on how that affects coverage and what that may look like as well. Um, that would be my recommendation. So um, I'm not sure if um if it's all right with you, Chair Purnell. I'd like to see if Ashley or Donna could chime in on on that.
Please.
Came in on May seventh of last year.
Ash, Ashley, can you speak to the shot clock? I I do know that one of the concerns we have here um for the commissioners and and Julia and Keith is that um this project is part of that CAF II build, and we have really tight timelines to get this completed in order to to meet uh the requirements of that particular program. So in addition to the shot clock issue, you know, we we might have an issue with with timeline if we can't get back on a schedule or how long it takes. I don't know to do the work related to um coming back with a monopine design uh with respect to getting into, assuming we get approval, uh into construction and time to meet the requirements of the of the of the Connect America Fund program.
Okay, thank you for that, so that we can consider that as we move forward. Let let me ask staff about this. If we were to take a fifteen-minute break, um, would you be able to work on revised language for some of those conditions in order to clarify that any area impacted by the veg management um would be included in the biological surveys?
Um, yes, I would probably ask for about twenty minutes if that would be all right. Um, and hopefully be ready to come back. Um, I'll go through it and see, though, if there's anything that we feel like we need to do additional work on. I may be coming back and saying I'm not quite ready. Um, but but we'll do our best to try to be ready for that, but that will not address Commissioner Weedeman's concern about a monopine. Um, just to be clear on that.
Yeah. So let's let's hear from Commissioner Weedeman, because, you know, we just heard from the applicant that that continuing this may not work. So, you know, the floor is yours.
Yes, I, and that's a maybe. Um, I I think um they could probably produce a monopine. Couldn't we get this on either our next meeting or the following one? Um, with the monopine. I'm very clear, I want to, I I don't want a lattice cell tower there. There's uh, I know that some of those neighborhoods, I think that's kind of insulting. And monopines actually work much better around the forested areas on the coast that's from highways. And so for future, so I would just need it's, you could go for a vote, but you you hear my position. So, thank you. So I would say extend it till we can get it, get it so it can approve.
Uh, Chair Purnell, I believe that um Ms. Davis had asked for Ashley Smith to respond as well on the monopine feature and possibly on timeline as well. So um perhaps this would be a good time to hear from Ms. Smith.
Let's do so now.
Thank you both. So I believe the shot clock is already expired on this one. Um. And we most likely would need a tolling agreement if we were to move forward uh with a continuance on this. And as far as the the monopine, we would definitely need a moment to look back into that to see if, you know, if AT&amp;T would approve to move forward with a lower rad center for that tower.
So um Ashley, um, this is Julia. I'm wondering, would it like continuance to the April twenty-first Planning Commission hearing allow you that adequate time to get that type of information?
Yes, definitely. If we were able to get on the next meeting this month, that would definitely give us enough time to understand more of the shot clock as well as the decision by AT&amp;T for moving forward with the monopine design.
And I see Donna has raised her hand as well. Um, Chair Purnell, if we could hear from her, that might be helpful too at this moment.
Of course, of course.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, yeah, Julia, I just had a question about that, about getting on to the next meeting. Um, are there issues with notification?
No, um, if there's if there's continuance to a date certain, there is not. Um, we would just ideally be able to share any revised information that um your team may prepare for this, a minimum of seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting. Ideally, as soon as you have it, we would like to be able to to share that information. So that way the commission perhaps at least some time to digest it.
Okay, and that's even with um a pretty significant design change, right? So.
Yes, uh, so alternatively, um, you could also look to a meeting in May. We do have a meeting, a regular meeting scheduled for May fifth um and another regular meeting scheduled for May nineteenth, if that would provide you um the additional time that you may find valuable.
Yeah, my my concern again is is um is the timeline to meet the the CAF II piece. So if if we're going to talk about this continuance, then it would have to be as soon as possible versus pushing it into May. I don't want to risk any additional um delay on there and the chance that, uh, you know, we could see this project uh lose that program.
So Donna, is the April twenty-first Planning Commission date preferable then?
If if it has to be continued, yes, then we we'd need that that first available date to do that. And I think, Ashley, you've indicated that that would give us enough time to go back. I think, you know, the the primary issue of concern is that uh neither Ashley nor I are uh wireless engineers. So uh we're not prepared at this time to speak about how uh that lowered uh radio center on those antennas would uh potentially negatively impact the coverage that we've shared with you that's going to be accomplished with uh the current design. So um, you know, we don't know. Sometimes we go back and it's it, maybe it's minimally impactful. Sometimes we go back, uh, if we've been asked to reduce the height on a site. And um with that reduction, it does reduce the, you know, the the coverage objectives. And one other thing to consider too, when we talk about reducing the height of the tower, uh, not only does that reduce, you know, AT&amp;T's radio center, but, you know, as Ashley mentioned, that the site is available for colocation of other carriers or um entities. And it will also in turn reduce the radio center of those other subsequent uh carriers uh should they choose to to use this tower. So as you go down the site, um, and given, you know, the topography and then the challenges that we have in the area, it would also potentially negatively impact potential coverage from other providers that might want to co-locate on the site. So I just wanted to kind of let you know it's it's a little bit of a an effect all the way down the line.
Yeah, that's understood. Thank you very much, Donna. And then um going going back to Julia and Keith, um, does it look like at this time we have room on the April twenty-first agenda? Should the commission vote to continue to that date certain?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Well, um, I am wondering if that gives the commission the information that it needs to put a motion forth? Yes.
I uh move that we continue this item. Let me get the number uh for you, twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 six. Uh, AT&amp;T Mobility uh request for a cell tower in the Wallala area be um postponed for further information to the commission and to the planning department to our next meeting or whenever they can arrange that.
Uh, so I think, uh, if I may, um, I think we would say to April twenty-first. And if for some reason AT&amp;T is not ready to proceed at that time, we can always discuss an additional continuance.
Great.
I'll second that.
Um, Commissioner Bibini?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedeman?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
So, uh, thank you. And to Donna and Ashley, um, hopefully we can connect with you, uh, myself and Keith after today's meeting and discuss a tolling agreement and timeline for getting some additional materials from you in preparation for the the meeting on the twenty-first.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for your flexibility. And just to clarify with staff that um I believe the commission will also be looking at that time for clarification on the conditions of approval as well.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. And then moving on to agenda item number seven matters from staff. Are there any matters from staff?
We have no matters from staff today.
Okay, um, agenda item eight matters from the commission. We have the nomination of a commissioner to sit as the Planning Commission representative on the Airport Land Use Commission.
And if I may, Chair Purnell, um, we learned from when we put out this agenda that also that Commissioner Weedeman's um term has expired as well on the Airport Land Use Commission. that also that Commissioner Wedeman's term has expired as well on the Airport Land Use Commission as of February. So what we will be asking is we will be putting probably an item onto the 21st agenda as well regarding her reappointment to the Airport Land Use Commission. And so I just want to make that note, and I don't know if Deputy County Counsel has anything to add on that.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, just to confirm, this was known as for one commissioner. So what we'll do with the other seat today and then come back to consider the seats that Commissioner Wedeman currently occupies at the next meeting.
Thank you. And a, and a question for you, Matt, while we've got you here. What do the bylaws say about the composition of the Airport Land Use Commission? Is there a requirement for two planning commissioners to serve?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, technically it's for three. And that's something that goes back to the prior composition and size of the planning commission and even things we need to work out regarding the Airport Land Use Commission. There's some things, there was a lawsuit between the county and city of Willets, you know, a couple of decades ago that resulted in the current composition that at some point we may have to get back and talk to them to kind of reconfigure that in the light of the smaller planning commission. So for the near term, certainly we need two, or desire to have two from the planning commission.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Bobini?
I, I just wanted to see if this was an item, since we are missing some of our fellow commissioners, that if they had had interest potentially, I feel like it would be best to have maybe everybody present to nominate because there may be folks that, you know, have interests that may not be able to present to nominate themselves.
And I'm in agreement so long as we have time to continue this item as well.
I, I guess you certainly can. Just to, would you like that to go on to the 21st agenda? Or would you like that to go to an alternate agenda?
Let's move it forward to the 21st. And then I also, just to let the commission know, I'm going to be on vacation the 21st, so I, I won't be here. So I'm just going to let you all know right now that I am not interested in serving on the airport. It's, it's just a time issue. I just don't have the time. Commissioner.
So, so in a similar situation, I actually have been subpoenaed to be in court that day for a postponed court case that I've been previously serving in. So I, I don't know actually when that commission meets. And so I would have to see kind of what potential conflicts I would have for sitting on that. That doesn't mean I don't have interest, but I think I just need a little more information, which I can do prior to that next meeting if, if it's put on that date.
So what I would probably recommend then is that maybe we do Commissioner Wedeman's appointment on the 21st. And maybe we schedule the nomination for May 5th.
And Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, if there's desire, this isn't, not to ask to be continued, we would just put it on another agenda in the future and we could just say commissioners or two commissioners, as it says noted then, and bring it back on the 3rd.
The 5th.
5th, sorry.
Great. Go ahead, yeah.
I just want to say, you know, I've actually enjoyed sitting on the Airport Land Use Committee. It's interesting. And, and the value of a, the commission, which is really important, we really look at, we really, my experience is that commission, the land use, they are mostly pilots and a business person or so. They have a whole different agenda that they're looking at. So I encourage somebody from the inland to sit on the seat. And the reason is especially somebody near Ukiah because that's the heart of our, our aviation industry. And it's nice to have somebody from the coast and somebody inland because it brings different land use perspectives that I, I feel the rest of the pilots really listen to. So I encourage another person. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's good insight. Commissioner Bobini?
You offhand, Commissioner Wedeman, know when those meetings meet? Just because I do sit on a few commissions for the city of Ukiah as well, that I just don't want to have conflict with.
I can respond on that. They meet on, on Thursdays after Planning Commission, usually at 2:00 PM is when those meetings start. But I will say they are not as regular as we have for Planning Commission. It's really on an as-needed type of basis. So usually we reach out beforehand to confirm if we have a forum or any particular meeting before anything's scheduled.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to put my interest, if we do move it to the 21st, like I said previously, I need to submit my unavailability for that meeting, but I, I live here in Ukiah.
That'd be great.
My business partner is a pilot as well. So it is something that I'm interested in. I just, again, had to make sure I didn't have any other conflicts, but it sounds like it won't conflict with this commission or any others that I sit on.
Great.
Well, that's good news. And it sounds like we'll be revisiting that. Didn't we decide May 5th?
Yes, I think that seems the most reasonable with just the plan.
Great. Okay. Well, I think even without action on that, that was a helpful discussion. And we can move on to agenda item nine, which is approval of the meeting minutes from January 6, 2022.
I make a motion to approve the January 6, 2022 minutes as presented in our package.
I can second that.
Commissioner Bobini?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. That just leaves one final item, which is adjournment. And I am looking for that motion to adjourn.
I can make that motion. I moved to adjourn the meeting today, April 7th, 2022, and see you all next time.
Great. All those in favor? Hi. Okay, thank you all. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.